Hello and welcome to the 7th Town Hall Meeting, based around the topics of Pray Vote Sand. I'm Mike Bain from Christian Voice New Zealand. And over the past months during these virtual meetings, we've attempted to highlight topics that this nation needs to hear and act on. We've been forthright about the nation's need to return to our base, our ancestors founded New Zealand on, and that was a biblical belief that God is sovereign. We've discussed on what the country needs in the way of prayer, and we've provided prayer points, things needed in this country where God can assist. On the theme of vote, we've encouraged everyone who can to take to the opportunity to exercise their freedom to vote. It's a luxury that few in the world have these days, but without telling you who to vote for, because we accept it's not our place. But I'd like to think we have challenged your thinking. Under the heading of sand, we've encouraged both Christians and non-Christians to make a stand to draw a line in the sand over many issues. The psalmist said, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." I think it would be fair to say that this nation's God is not the one in heaven who created mankind, and this country is far removed from being blessed. Now, to live in New Zealand today, it's like being a passenger on the Tahuia train on a trip between Hamilton and Auckland, not knowing the engineer has just taken the train through a red light, not knowing if there's another train coming directly towards us. With not so many days until the election, if you believe the polls, people are starting to wake up that this government that's in power has not been in control, has not been transformational, has not been open, honest and transparent, has not lifted children out of poverty, has not delivered 100,000 new homes, has not delivered a smoke-free New Zealand or anything that looks like it, has not delivered anything which points to a zero road toll, has not achieved better health outcomes for all New Zealanders, and has not provided a safe country but an increase in violent crime, and has not achieved its goals on climate change, has not provided this generation its nuclear-free moment. Now, I don't have time today to list this government's list of "have nots", and it's a very, very long one, confirming failure after failure. In the space of five years, we've seen a country go from one of prosperity, hope and a future to one likened to a third-world country, divided by race, divided by income, divided by generation, divided by geography. Made a woman's womb to be the unsafest place in New Zealand was the most liberal abortion laws on the planet. It's pitted landlords against tenants and divided town and country, but worst of all, it removed freedoms of individuals, divided families, communities and society because of mandated vaccination policies without care or kindness. As the psalmist said, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." But you know, we as New Zealanders, in that statement, I'm calling on everyone from every group, whether you be of European descent, Maori, Pacifica, Middle Eastern, Asian or India. If I'm being honest, we all came from somewhere and we are all in reality a stranger in a strange land. So let's all come together and sort out and decide just what sort of nation it is we want to live in and what sort of a nation do we want to be? What sort of people are we? What sort of future we want for ourselves and those who come after us? And we're going to do this before we head to the ballot box in October. As a nation, we need to look to the past, just as those who came to this country did from across all the oceans, and make decisions on where, as a nation, we want to go. But right now, I want to take you back to the early 70s, for those of you like me who failed at maths at school, that's 50 years ago. The 1970s was a time when, I was young at the time, when we had no sense of fashion, I was one of those. Men wore fleared jeans, paisley shirts, and were often encouraged by fathers to get a haircut. The girls, though, not conservative about dress length, they saw a wide belt around their waist was sufficient enough to be modest as they tripped along on their platform shoes. But all that aside, it was a time of resistance to such outward signs of progress. And very briefly, it was also a time for Norman Kirk, who became New Zealand's third Labour Prime Minister. The first Labour Prime Minister, Michael Joseph Savage, was revered as the leader of the most transformational government ever in this country. So a lot was expected of the man that we called Big Norm. Although only in power a short time before he passed away, Big Norm managed to straddle the generations' need for the status quo and the desire to move forwards as a nation. Norman Kirk connected with people's desires for those, a generation who wanted someone to love, somewhere to live, somewhere to work and something to hope for, and for others who wanted a state for which those things were also the priority. Now, this boomer generation, who was by now starting to produce the next generation, was looking to government, not to provide these things, but an environment where they could be achieved. Without giving Big Norm, though, a free past, his belief was that we came to nationhood with no legacy of bitterness, which doesn't pass muster today, even if it was orthodox, thinking back then. Kirk's social conservatism would certainly be ridiculed today as he lacked support for things like homosexual reform, and it was on his watch we saw the start of the dawn raids on illegal migrants. Now, Norman Kirk was both large in stature and heart, but he gave us a framework in which to look at life. Some of it's familiar. Here was Big Norm as the internationalist cancelling the proposed Springbok rugby tour and driving the first into date only state-sponsored physical anti-nuclear protest when the frigates Otago and Canterbury sailed off to Mururoa in 1973. Kirk's politics around nuclear weapons were attributed to the fact that his father had been a conscientious objector in the First World War. And here he is, as a visionary, the first Prime Minister with a Pacific sensibility and an independent foreign policy in which New Zealand was no longer an island off the coast of Western Europe. Whether you're a nationalist or Labour supporter, it was a time when New Zealand, that little nation at the bottom of the world, was like the mouse that roared, and the world took notice. It was a time when New Zealanders knew who they were and where they were going. You know, we were proud to be called a New Zealander. Can we say that today as we watch this country shatter into many pieces? And the question now comes through as to who's responsible? Christopher Luxon recently blamed former leader Jacinda Ardern and left her predecessor Chris Hipkins with the carnage. But it's not fair to put all the blame on Ardern, even COVID. You can't blame nine years of a national government, colonisation or the economy. Blame must fall on all of us, as the government is only a place that is in place at the will of the people. In 2020, New Zealand spoke clearly, giving Ardern's government the biggest majority ever under MMP to see transformation, a restart in our future direction for this country. Now, their failure to drive change was as successful as driving the Tahuia train from Hamilton to Auckland. Labour ignored the warning lights, they ignored the signs. They failed to communicate with the space and come October, it may well find the Labour gravy train derailed. The failure of our country is the number-one reason, top of the list, things we should be praying for, which leads me into our first heading, called pray. If you want to fix our country, we really do need to fix what we can, the things we can control. Citizens of the 70s wanted from a government, an environment for its population to have someone to love, somewhere to live, somewhere to work and something to hope for. Realistically, no government can provide you with someone to love, nor should it. But if we were to list the things we should pray about top of the list, put love at the top. With so much low self-esteem prevalent in our children, one only must view suicide figures for confirmation, but it's true. Many people today are incapable of loving anyone, and are you the type of person who can be loved? Jesus gave us a new commandment, to love our neighbours as we do ourselves. If we don't have love, how can we love others? Look around, ask yourself, what am I doing which is different to others? Let me see, many today live a life by choice, a life of solitude. Their only interaction is by Facebook, text messaging or group chat, and even in the break room at work, what is it that everybody's doing? You know, when the Eagles sang the line, "We're all prisoners of our own device", and the song Hotel California, they were correct. Mind you, in saying that, has anything changed? We lack those one-on-one interpersonal skills and nowadays, kids, if they do speak, it's in text language. Let me just give you a biblical perspective on the subject by asking this question. If we carried and spent as much time looking at our Bibles as much as we carry and look at our phones, what sort of country do you think we would have? So yes, let's pray, just not ourselves, we need to pray for our country, we need to pray for our leaders, and we need to pray that we can return this country, this nation, back to its foundation based on the Bible. But for this to happen, we need to have strength in the pulpits, in our churches. You know, Germany in the 1930s saw the rise of fascism, a bit like we see the rise of Marxism happening today. In Germany, history records what happened to a God-fearing nation when the church remained silent. So yes, we should pray for our pastors in our country. Like the prophet Hosea, I'm calling on many timid church leaders who have caved, conforming to this world to return to teaching the truths about God's word. Now, pastors may be under a lot of pressure to tell people what they want to hear as their congregations aren't always interested in what God says. But we must stop confusing God's patience with His approval and preach with conviction from our pulpits again. We should preach as dying men to dying men. We do not need hesitancy in our pulpit, but strong leadership and united churches in this country to rise. We need to hear the voice of the United Church putting pressure on our government for weakening what Christians hold as holy, things like marriage, the family, standards on entertainment, the moral breakdown of our society, Bibles back in schools, the Ten Commandments. We need strong leadership from our pastors today, who need to open a Bible and stop neglecting the truth, confusing and deceiving audiences, teaching them to live a form of Christianity void of repentance, void of truth. We need to stop confusing people about judgment, encourage repentance and stop making excuses for sin. Now, moving on to our second topic of vote, where do you start? Really, where does one start? This is how I'm going to start, with what the expectation of New Zealanders wanted from its leadership half a century ago. One, someone to love, somewhere to live, somewhere to work and something to hope for. Can anyone tell me, have we achieved those goals? You know, we're 50 years on from the day that Norman Kirk took control of the Treasury benches, and still today, we're asking the government of the day for conditions which makes it easy to love our families, conditions where we can have adequate housing rather than sleeping in our cars or living in temporary accommodation like motels, conditions which provide incentive for business to prosper local, nationally and internationally, which will provide an honest day's wage for an honest day's work, conditions which will abate the fear of parents today as to what kind of world will our children inherit, anything which the country can hope for. What is the definition of hope? Well, hope is described as an optimistic state of mind based on an expectation of positive outcomes with respect to events and circumstances in one's life or the world at large. I asked, where do we start? As a country, we've spiralled downwards over the last nearly six years into a country that's become unrecognisable. You know, I can feel the breeze increasing as New Zealanders are awakening from their sleep. The breeze is growing stronger, and soon we'll feel the winds have changed, but somebody will blame climate change for it. But there is a mood for change, but I come back to the question I asked earlier. What sort of country do we want to be? I hear Prime Minister Chris Hipkins is in it for you, but does anyone want to define what it is? Really, what Labour slogan should read is, "We're all in it because we had no clue." A government with plenty of ideas, plenty of promises, but no clue on how to deliver anything, not even a letter, despite having a majority in Parliament. Let's be bold, let's be truthful for once. Mr. Hipkins, we're in the deep proverbial. I'm so glad you have your waiters, but if you take off the Marxist-framed glasses and admit how the country has submerged so far into economic ruin brought about by your party's mismanagement, secularist, woke and divisive policies, the only way you can breathe is using a mask and a snorkel. Surely, if your finance minister had graduated university with a degree in economics rather than a BA in arts, he may have understood British Prime Minister Margaret Thatcher's words when she said, "The problem of socialism is that you eventually run out of other people's money." At this stage, I once again apologise for my previous comparisons between this government and the Muppets. Kermit and Miss Piggy, I unreservedly apologise. You were much better at delivery. But to be fair to Hipkins, he's only been Prime Minister since the beginning of this year after Ardern abandoned ship. But it doesn't excuse him as he served as a senior minister at the Cabinet table, and have you noticed that a lot of our issues are worldwide? Like many governments around the world, we've been sucked into becoming puppets of the United Nations and the World Economic Forum. It's true, look at all the causes, the roots of our problems. Then, look at the plans of Agenda 2030, the Great Reset, and tell me how our issues don't come from those initiatives. Well, now can I point out that New Zealand's involvement in Agenda 2030 goes back over successive governments since the turn of the century? You know, the little mouse that roared back in the 70s is now just a compliant lapdog. So we look for change from this leftist agenda built on Marxism. The leftist march through the institutions over the past four decades is going to be felt for a long time as it's been taught to at least two of the last generations. The problems in New Zealand especially, the growing racism, can't be repaired overnight. On the right and centre-left, there's Christopher Luxon's National Party and David Seymour's ACT Party, they're desperate to be in government. Both can sell their souls for power desperate to please the people with their promises, but therein lies an issue. And let's not forget, these two parties also supported the Labour government and its mandates, and refused to speak to the people. Luxon has promised he will repeal legislation which Labour is wanting to enact, like Three Waters, health, education, justice, law. He wants to get this economy moving again. It all sounds great until you realise National too will continue to toe the same line as the previous government, a line that is attached to the United Nations and the World Economic Forum. You know, both Luxon and Seymour have a tough job ahead of them to convince us they're different. In Luxon's case, the media portrays us as unknown, but as I've said many times, Luxon may become the Prime Minister, but it's not his personality, and it's not a personality contest. It's about a party who can lead this country, and the Prime Minister is about who can lead a team to achieve it. But all we're seeing at this age is superficial changes to appease the electorate. Are we too far down the road with differing legislation? Whatever National proposes to do to stop the marification of this country will result in some form, I'm sure, of anarchy, which leaves us with the agenda driven Greens and Tāpae Maori. Say no more, but I'm going to. First, the Greens. I like a lot of what the Greens stand for, a better world. As guardians of the earth, we, society, has failed, and the Green Party, who along with Greenpeace and the worldwide fun for nature, are there, there to prick our conscience. But if only the Green Party stuck to their knitting, they could be influential, and have been in the past, but they don't, and they have allowed themselves to be distracted into social racial issues. And now they're trying to teach other parties how to suck eggs on the economy. The Greens' agenda on climate change, while admirable, has been nothing but divisive, where they, along with Labour, have created a division between town and country. Hard to believe when you go to the supermarket, but we're in the middle of a global food crisis, which I've spoken about in length in the past. But for the Greens to suggest we cut back on food production in this country is reckless. I'm not sure if it's still the case, but we're still facing a worldwide shortage of eggs brought about by avian flu, which has affected chickens, but someone suggested to me that the real reason was because all the egg-producing chickens started to identify as roosters. Food shortages brought about drought-like conditions in the food bowl of America and exacerbated by the war in Ukraine and the hoarding of grain by China are impacting the world. Once again, this type of fear-mongering climate change policy is part of Agenda 2030. And Europe governments are trying to buy up farms, and they're slowly pushing farmers to the brink of collapse in the name of this climate change poppycock. And poppycock is how a man once hurled, as the leading botanist David Bellamy referred to, climate change. He maintained a view that man-made climate change is part of a natural cycle, and there's nothing we can actually do to stop those cycles. He went on to say, "The world is now facing spending vast amounts of money and tax to try to solve a problem that doesn't actually exist." Interesting, before his death, Bellamy was sacked by the BBC because his view did not fit their narrative. Tāpae Maori, if you believe we have race issues in this country, then look no further for the source. Here it is. Yes, we can all agree, Tāpae Maori disagrees with the treaty, but this country and previous governments have attempted to resolve and recompense fought past wrongs. But sorry, the leadership of this party, their lack of respect to the generations of New Zealanders who've worked to make New Zealand the great country it once was, is absolutely out of order. What type of country do we want to be? We should be the type of country we ought to be. We were one nation, we should all be one nation, but the actions and preferences and behaviour like Tāpae Maori exemplify are not in any way going to bring all parties together. But it will continue to divide. But the truth is, we really don't have racism towards Maori in this country, and I'm not naive to downplay the issue and acknowledge that there is a certain edge of racism in this country. But Maori cannot claim to be the only victim. The Tāpae Maori co-leader Raewiri Waititi in Parliament on July 25th suggested in the House that the Westminster form of governance has been forced upon Maori because of the misogynistic views on Maori women. Parliament, he says, is the unsafest place for Maori women, and the current form of government needs to be replaced with a treaty-centric governance. And yet, as a New Zealander of proud Scottish descent, remain confused as to what it is that Maori really want. On one side of the argument is the Maori chiefs who were duped into signing the treaty, the treaty is a lie. Maori wanted co-governors and in no way ceded their sovereignty to Queen Victoria. But on the other side of discussion, they want the terms of the treaty upheld. As Waititi mentioned in Parliament, they want government to be treaty-centric. Well, here's the question, what defines an ethnic Maori today? What is and who is a real Maori? While we hear heaps of comment from Tāpae Maori, and they're fully representative of Maori, or are they, along with the Maori Labour caucus, just a bunch of radicals? Now, there's plenty of diversity within this current term of Parliament, and yet Maoredom are no better off. And that will happen when a cause is not united. Lining Tāpae Maori up alongside of urban and Maori tribal groups and Maori leaders, one prominent leader is the current Governor General Dame Cindy Cairo. Her excellency comes from mixed parentage, both Maori and European. I remain confused lining up what Tāpae Maori says. Dame Cindy, although chosen to identify as a Maori and yet is able to perform in a representative position for the colonial power her people object to so strongly. Dame Cindy is quoted in a Radio New Zealand article as accepting the position under existing constitutional arrangements. She accepts them and will serve the Queen. She accepts this unique marriage and understanding of the foundational basis of the Treaty of Waitangi and its place in our history. As a proud descendant of Scotland, my belief, and I would even speak out for the indigenous people of New Zealand to go as far as saying, "We are New Zealand." We are really getting down below the 5%, with several parties who have been trying to represent minority voices for years, and others which have been spawned from the COVID mandates. We must not forget what it is that they're standing for and remember the reasons we had so much conflict that this nation had seen and how all political parties ignored the voice of freedom. We talk of division in this country, if you want it, there it is, brought about by the government of the day and supported by all the opposition parties at the time. Briefly, because I'm aware of the time, democracy is under fire. Democracy as we know it is like every other thing which is changing. Willie Jackson summed it all up when he said on Q&amp;A last year, when he said, "Democracy has changed, this is not a majority democracy." I'm going to put this out there, and those who follow and watch our podcast will know that the agenda of all governments is to move towards a global government. New Zealand has initiatives already in place to ensure we conform. We've shown government our willingness to conform. Our reserve bank is in the process of creating a centralised, digitalised banking system, so you won't have money. And for those conspiracy theorists amongst you, you're correct. The government has been monitoring you for years. Rewind the history clock back to the Garden of Eden. The question over governance was raised back then as to whether man should be in charge and not God. Look at history, mankind has tried every type of government and none. Not one model has stood out as blasting and being ideal for governing the masses. So where to now? Well, the drumbeats are beating, or as one speaker I heard years ago put, "The winds of change are coming." There's without a doubt a real mood for it. One, it is not my intention or place to tell you who you should vote for, but you can have a say in the type of country, the direction you want this country to take, and influence on the hope you can have for coming generations. It's your right to exercise your vote. Personally, I'll be in a polling booth on Election Day, and I encourage you to do the same, and I know that many Christians think it's wrong, but it's biblical, and it was Jesus who told us that we should be the light and the salt. By exercising our right to vote, we're adding some seasoning into our immediate future and providing some light in a darkening world. Like you, I'm looking upwards for my salvation to come and look forward to the day when the King of Kings and Lord of Lords, Jesus Christ, will reign over the earth. Moving on to our final subject of stand, I'm going to make this quick. If we're wanting change, if we want to love, if we want somewhere to live and we want somewhere to work and we want something to hope for, let me give you an answer from the Bible. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. It's simple, we need a nation to return to basic Christian principles, and that means that we need to stand on the Bible and all it contains. The word of God is a good foundation of love, security and hope on offer. Nothing else comes close. You may know and be interested to know, but the Westminster system, the model of government which we practise in this country is based on the same system Britain, Australia and many other democratic countries do. It has been the basis for many other countries who have moved into hybrid systems like Israel, South Africa and Canada. But its foundations, its foundations of the Westminster system are rooted firmly on the same law God handed to Moses, the Ten Commandments, and expanded from the Mosaic law found in the books of Juteronomy and Leviticus. Why would someone like Raewiri Waititi suggest we change it? When it comes to government, we cannot expect it to provide us with someone to love, and we should not expect our government to provide somewhere to live. We cannot expect the government to provide us with the work, but we should expect the government to provide us with something to hope for. Norman Kirk was able to bridge the wants and needs of generations. Norman Kirk was able to bridge the wants and needs of generations. Today's leaders now must bridge culture, apathy, race issue, economic woes, security, health, education, but above all, it must bring open and transparent and bold leadership for the future. As a country, going to the polls, I repeat, we need a government which will lead us to sort out and decide just what sort of nation it is that we want to live in and what sort of nation do we want to be? What sort of people we want to be? What sort of future we want for ourselves and those who come after us? To achieve this, I encourage you to continue to pray, exercise your right to vote and to stand steadfastly on the Word of God. Let me leave you with this one thought from the 33rd Book of Psalms, you've heard it before, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord."